Good evening. The commission housing task force meeting. I'm Paul Saber. January fifteenth. Paul Paul. I'm here, Nick. David Cracker, he is out. Paul, okay.
Here.
Kathy Sutcliffe.
There.
Michael Bender is out. Megan Juplis.
I don't see her.
No?
Not yet.
Okay. Um. Jay Byers is here.
Here.
And Dennis Plumer.
Here.
And I'll sit Jay Byers for Michael Bender. And um. On the. Do we have Kim and Matt Wiesing? And Brenda Dyson. In the room, we also have Carl Fortuna. David Morris. David Morris.
Laura Gray.
All right.
Bruce Carlson.
Good morning.
Jerry Dennis.
Mike Kelly.
Mike Kelly.
All right. We'll move the minutes in correspondence to the end of the meeting. I also need to add an agenda item. The election of officers, we do that after new business. Is there any discussion on that? Can I get a motion to accept the changes?
I give a motion to accept changes.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Very good. Um. I'm gonna turn it over to Chris, who can introduce. And David.
So, welcome. This is David Corris. He is the executive director of MRDA, not murder. And he's here tonight from the Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority to give the town an overview of the authority technical assistance and housing, housing growth zones for opportunities potentially, hopefully for Old Sabre. So, thank you for joining us and welcome.
Yeah, great. Thanks so much for having me. So, I, I think I'll give you a brief overview of how MRDA came about and what it is that we're task force, about how we're gonna operate, or where we are in our process, and what the next steps would be if Old Sabre elects to work with us. And I think that's a crucial point from the outset, is we are a voluntary opt-in discretionary program that municipalities can choose to take advantage of or not. We do not bring sticks, we do not bring by any means a heavy-handed approach to developing housing within the state of Connecticut. I think we are based on a very strong opinion held by my board that I work for, held by the governor, that there are plenty of communities within the state of Connecticut that do want to find ways to develop housing that fit with their strategy for economic development, that fit with their strategy for meeting the needs of their population, that fit with their long-term growth projections. So they might need some support, and that could be technical support, it could be some additional resources, it could be financial, it could be capacity. And we are hopefully going to evolve to a place where we can be a toolkit that gets mobilized differently for each town or city that we work with, bringing the particular gap expertise, capacity, resources, financing that are best suited to meet the needs of each individual community. So, first and foremost, I'll talk a bit about the history of the legislation and sort of how it evolved over the last few years. And, and for that, it's important to take a step back, actually about a decade, because it was early in the Malloy administration when the General Assembly, in coordination with the executive branch, established an entity called the Capital Region Development Authority. And that authority has a variety of responsibilities. They manage the venues in the state of, in the city of Hartford, the convention center, et cetera. But what was new about their establishment was that they were created to help the city of Hartford and the surrounding seven municipalities develop more housing within their downtowns. Predominantly, commercial conversions, but also some new construction. And there was a recognition that, you know, Hartford in particular had the infrastructure to support growth, had the political will, needed more bodies on the street to support small businesses and their economic development objectives. But the economics of the development projects just didn't work. It didn't pencil out. There needed to be a flexible gap financing entity. And the Capital Region Development Authority was set up to do just that. And they've had a phenomenal success rate. They've developed, they've helped develop thousands of units within the core of Hartford. It's been tremendously impactful, life on the street. And not surprisingly, at the start of the Lamont administration, Ridgeport, Haven, Waterbury, they said, well, why exactly does Hartford get this dedicated pot of money and this dedicated team of experts to help them with the same thing that we need support with as well? And so in 2019, the General Assembly passed legislation that established the Municipal Redevelopment Authority. And it was basically Capital Region Development Authority gap financing for the other cities in Connecticut outside of Hartford with populations of greater than seventy-five thousand. But it wasn't funded, it wasn't populated, COVID struck, it got put on a shelf. We had other priorities in the state. And in 2023, they came back to it. And leadership in the governor's office, leadership in the General Assembly said, you know, we really do wanna do this, but let's take a fresh look at it. Why, why are we limiting it to places with populations of greater than seventy-five thousand? There's communities all throughout the state that are trying to build housing in ways that are particularly appropriate for them. Why don't we open it up to, to everybody? And so the big changes in that legislation were now any municipality outside of Hartford in the contiguous seven, so one hundred and sixty-one of the states, one hundred and sixty-nine municipalities are eligible to join the Municipal Redevelopment Authority. With one caveat, you have to have either a train or bus rapid transit station existing or planned and/or a downtown. And so we can work with communities that have existing rail stations, planned rail stations, the bus rapid transit system around Hartford, the Fast Track, or the ones that are planned radiating out from New Haven. But we can also work in communities with the downtown. Any place from a Middletown to a Torrington to a, a, a Chester, you know, places that have walkable mixed-use centers oriented around some civic buildings, oriented around some public space, oriented along the main street. And so that, that's sort of the eligibility criteria. So of those one hundred and sixty-one municipalities, I don't know how many actually might meet those criteria, a hundred or so, but they have to want the support. And so um. The way that, I, I guess the other big change in the legislation was, so if you, now that it's open to all these broader municipalities, to may have some certainty that we're going to get some outcomes from this process in terms of new housing production. The other thing that was added in was a certification process. And so the legislation technically says approval of local zoning. I, I think that's a bit of a misnomer, because we do not usurp any local zoning authority, any local land use controls. We do not take that authority away from the municipality in any way. But we do come in and look at your zoning and determine whether or not, and the statutory language is whether or not it will facilitate a substantial increase in the number of dwelling units. Now, on the one hand, that's very subjective. On the other hand, it's appropriate, because substantial in New Haven is very different than substantial in Old Sabre. And so we wanna make sure that we have the ability to sort of tailor our assessment to what is meaningful growth for each individual municipality contributing towards this larger objective of trying to house, you know, the future of population of the state. And so to that end, it's essentially a four-step process. And I'll, I'll get to the carrot at the end of the path for the moment. But first and foremost, the municipality needs to opt-in through action by its local legislative body. And that's just the, the intent to, to talk, basically. To formally engage with one another, to roll up our sleeves, to look at a map, to talk about the zoning, and see, you know, whether or not we might be able to work together. Then we look at the local zoning. And in some instances, we may look at a zone, a TOD zone around a train station and say, yeah, you're there. That, that zone meets our criteria. We might, on another zone, or, or in a municipality that doesn't have a zone that yet meets our criteria, we might say, hey, we encourage you to do X, Y, and Z. At that point, you can opt not to do that, right? Our conversations can then be over for the time being. Or you can say, yeah, you know what, we're open to some of those changes. We'll do them with our in-house staff. Or quite a few municipalities, we expect, will say, yeah, we're open to some of those changes. Can you help us? Can you help us draft some of the zoning? Can you help us do some of the analysis to better understand what the fiscal impact to our municipal budget will be if that zoning were to be built out? And we have a cadre of on-call consultants that we will mobilize in support of our partner municipalities to go through some of that analytical work to, to answer some of those questions. And once we've certified the zoning, which again, could be a check the box, because it's already in place, then we enter into an MOU with a chief elected official that designates the development district boundaries. And the restrictions of that is the boundaries have to either be within a half a mile of a transit station, within a downtown, and they have to have the zoning that we've certified, right? So, one way to think about it is if you draw a half a mile radius around a train station, that's about five hundred acres. We may work with a community where three hundred of those acres might be zoned single-family, and that's fine. But hundred of those acres are zoned with a zone or zones that we have certified will produce housing. And so that would be the, the boundaries of the district. Those two hundred acres of the half a mile radius that has zone or zones that we have certified. Once the boundaries are set, then either the municipality or developers or property owners therein can apply to us for funding. And that funding, we suspect, will either go to gap financing, low-interest loans designed to meet the needs of the capital stack. We do not have affordability requirements. But in some instances, we may leverage our investment to achieve that, but it is not a threshold criteria of our funding program. We are about housing production in places that are community-appropriate, not necessarily housing for any particular socioeconomic band. We suspect that we may also invest in infrastructure. And that could be infrastructure related to a particular site development, streetscape, or a sewer connection. Or it could be infrastructure meant to unlock the potential of a larger district. Sewer extension, flood risk reduction, infrastructure, road reconfiguration, pedestrian bridge, right? Any number of things that we could imagine that would add enough value to a series of properties, so that then their economics works better on their own. And then maybe we don't need to invest in, in the gap for the individual projects. So, I'll tell you a bit about kind of where we are now. So we have a sixty million dollar bond authorization from the current fiscal year. We do suspect, or expect, I guess I should say, that in the next biennial budget, that will be increased twofold, threefold, somewhere in that order of magnitude. Somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty, two hundred million. We expect that we'll have available between now and the end of FY twenty-seven. We, I started July twenty-ninth. And so for the last five months or so, about half of my time has been creating a quasi-public authority from scratch. And everything that goes into that with policies and procedures and, and building out the operational capacity and procurement. And then the other half of the time is meeting with municipalities and talking through the process and seeing whether or not there's a, a localized area within the community where it might make sense to, to work together. I've worked very hard to try and make sure that this program is not just about the big cities. I think it was a very intentional act to remove the population threshold. And so while, you know, the Bridgeports and the New Havens and the Waterburys are of course interested in, in this funding source and the opportunity that it provides. You know, we wanna be working with communities of various sizes in various corners of state. Shoreline East is certainly an important corridor. We have today, to probably the sort of burning question, so who has signed up so far? So where we are today, we just got legal counsel on board about forty days ago. I was waiting for them to have a draft resolution template that we could circulate to make sure that that was vetted by counsel. So we have now sent out a opt-in resolution template to twenty-one municipalities who have raised their hand and said we're interested in having that first conversation with our local legislative body. Some of them will, will plow through that in the next forty-five days. Some of them will have their zoning in place, will be able to check that box. I think maybe a half a dozen of those will, will get through the steps and will be able to accept project funding applications in June or July. And then the rest of that group and other municipalities that, that raised their hand month by month will be on a rolling, you know, a rolling adoption. We won't have kind of grant rounds or funding rounds. It'll be a, a first come, first served. But I think, you know, with a lot of communities, you know, some that are raising their hand really need more planning support. And so it'll be a smaller allocation of funds. And it'll be, you know, a year of working together before there's a pipeline of project. Other communities, yeah, they've got stuff that's entitled, sitting on the sideline, and buffer interest rates would have broken ground six months ago. And an infusion of kind of mess in the debt tailored to meet the, the needs of the project could have a groundbreaking, you know, within this calendar year. So everyone's kind of coming from a different place. And again, communities of all different size. And, you know, we wanna do what we can, hopefully to be a resource and some capacity add to help the communities that, that do decide to work with us to find a, you know, strategic approach that makes sense for them, capitalizing on the portions of their communities that are transit-accessible, that are walkable, that, that have the potential to kind of continue to evolve into, you know, mixed-use nodes that will add to their grand list and, and hopefully support local business and, and add to the quality of life. And, you know, we're confident. I guess one, one other thing that I'll, that I'll note. You know, for the communities that are engaged, there are, we're consistently trying to think of ways in which we can add value to support them and ways that go beyond our, our funding availability. And, and two things that we're gonna be doing are, one, helping with marketing and outreach. So, you know, we suspect we'll be working with a wide range of developers, maybe folks that aren't, you know, that don't have your community on their radar. If they come to us because they're looking for good development opportunities in the state of Connecticut, so there might be some matchmaking there that we can, we can facilitate. And the other thing that I'm sort of aspirational about, but hopeful that will play a meaningful role in, is helping, not just helping municipalities with their local regulatory framework, but helping align the state regulatory process with the local planning and zoning objectives. And, and by that, I mean, a lot of other states that I've worked in go to great lengths when they have districts like these with a, you know, comprehensive approach that has been locally vetted and supported. They will then navigate that build-out through some of the state regulatory process, so that individual sites and individual developments don't have to do that as they arise. And so it's a way of saying, once the vision is in place and there's local support around that, if you come in and you're in compliance with zoning, you're not gonna have a subsequent multi-year permitting process through things like the Office of State Traffic Administration or Flood Management Certification. And again, I, I wanna be clear, that's aspirational. But I'm having very good conversations with my counterparts across multiple state agencies. And, and hopefully, these very localized target geographies that we work with our municipal partners on can be a model for how to, you know, streamline good development in the places where we want it within the state. Questions?
Lots of bad chips.
Yeah.
So, um. Do, have there been, has there been any consideration to tweaking the legislation? Is there, did you see the legislation as weak in any part of it, or?
Yeah. So, there are a couple minor tweaks that we're talking about. But if, if you have anything in mind, I certainly wanna hear it. I mean, the, the things that we're focused on are very minor, but little things like, this wouldn't be applicable to you, but it says, you know, you can do a district within walking distance of a train station that's in your municipality. Well, there are a couple instances where the station is actually not in your municipality, but walking distance is. There's, we've had a lot of conversations. You know, the legislation says the opt-in has to be done by the local legislative body. What if it's a town meeting? Could you do it?
Well, that's a, that's another, I wrote that down. Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
By the way, if it was town meeting, we'd have no problem in our community.
Yeah.
But sometimes the legislative body is considered the best selection.
So we.
Certain resolutions.
That's high up on my list for, for tweaks this year.
Yeah. So the half-mile.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
That's another one.
But, but what you just said, within walking distance of a.
Yeah, so I, I, that was me talking. That's not the statute.
Oh, oh, oh.
So the statute to half a mile, I consider a walking distance three-quarters of a mile, maybe even a mile.
Yeah.
Where it gets interesting is it's or a downtown. So, in some communities, right, it's gonna be these weird, unique shapes that are particular for that community. And so in, in one community, right, it may not even go a half a mile to the west of the station, because that enters into a single-family neighborhood that we don't wanna touch. To the other side, maybe the station area becomes the downtown, and it can go a mile, two miles off in that direction, because now you're capturing the downtown.
I mean, I, I mean, Old Sabre fits that too, it did.
Yeah.
With the downtown, right, to the
Yeah.
train station gateway.
So.
And of course, you know, there's a lot of folks in this room who are very interested in this other area of town that we're really working on Mayor's Way, and that we're calling it, which is beyond a half mile.
Yeah.
So, but. Who are, who are some of the, I'm just kicking this off, so maybe this, I have to run also. Who, who are the consultants?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so I actually can't say, because the board is adopting its on-call consultant list tomorrow.
Okay.
But tomorrow, I'll be able to send that. And it is, um. Uh, we've, we've gone to great lengths to be inclusive. And so they'll be, it's a, it's a relatively long list, because we want flexibility if towns have existing relationships to be able to piggyback on our procurement. But the other thing I'll say is, it, it's a mixture of consultants who have a depth of Connecticut experience and some consultants who have a depth of transit-oriented development experience in Massachusetts or in New York, who maybe can bring some new ideas to Connecticut.
So, I think, so requesting the resolution is as simple as?
Saying, send me the resolution.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, look, I, I mean, I'll just, just generally, this community going back fifteen, twenty years has just been very open to housing, of all types. The housing at the train station is a radical departure for this town in, in terms of single-family housing, and that we have, but it's been a huge success. I think it has been. So, I mean, we are very interested in it, whether it's, you know, whether it's affordable or not. I think we're interested in having more housing, more housing downtown, certainly. So, I know we're interested. And Chris, Chris and I have been talking about this for several months now. So, really happy you came back.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. Bruce?
Part of the legislation is the development of this housing growth zone.
Yes.
Which is what parameters come, come into. As, as you've talked to other places, or as you've thought it through, how, um, you know, how confined is that? Is that, is that, you know, do, do you make that? And then if you wanted to do something outside of that, you'd have to create a second? Or could you expand? How, how are you thinking?
Yeah, yeah, great question. So. So the way, I'll answer sort of three different ways, right? So first and foremost, I don't consider housing growth zone something distinct from your zoning. It's whether or not we certify that your MX one zone or your H four zone, you know, what, whatever your existing zone's on, whether or not we certify that one or more of them are considered housing growth zones from, from our perspective. There are many communities that we talk to who say, listen, we wanna get started with our TOD zone that we adopted two years ago. It only covers thirty acres, but it's in place. And at an outset, we would draw our boundaries around that zone, which does not preclude us from working with the town on a zoning amendment contiguous to that, and then subsequently amending the district boundaries to encompass what has now become a housing growth zone. The final thing that I'll say is, you know, we've talked a bit on the board, and we still need to flesh out some of our parameters. But we've talked a bit about, you know, we don't expect communities that we work with to rezone the entirety of their downtown, or the entirety of their station area to meet our housing growth zone objectives. But we also don't want a community to, you know, for lack of a better term, spot zone around a project and say, well, we want support, because we, we've gone through the political hurdles and we, we like this project. There's gonna be some minimum acreage. There's gonna be something so that we know the town is not just thinking about a project that's in the pipeline, but thinking about the broader.
Yeah.
And, and as, as just like a starting point, just to share, MBTA in Greater Boston has been doing some of this work. They set a minimum of ten acres. I don't know that that's gonna be our threshold, but, you know, that's kind of the order of magnitude.
Matt, join us.
Thank you.
Questions?
So is this money a grant or a loan or a combination of resources?
Yeah, so it will depend. It will depend on the project, it'll depend on the community, it'll depend on what's, what's needed in that instance. And so there will, we, we are certainly enabled to make grants, which I think would more likely be on the infrastructure side. And then we are enabled to make loans, which I think is the more likely way in which we would participate directly in a development project.
Thank you.
So we have broad flexibility to, to tailor it to the needs of the project. Or the district.
And in terms of the cost of the loans, is it market interest rate, commercial?
It'll be, it'll be tailored. It'll be tailored to the project. And so, you know, there are some state programs that do have a set rate. They're usually below market, but they do have a separate. If we're going off the Capital Region model, term, rate, all of that is, is in play. We need, we need the money back, we need some sustainability of the fund, of course. But it's gonna be tailored to, to bring the projects to fruition in, in the near term. Yeah.
Megan.
Megan?
Hi, um, quick question. I was just wondering, when we're looking at whether the zoning regulations will substantially increase the amount of housing, are we talking about face value at build-out? If this, if everything were built out according to the regs, it would result in substantially more housing? Or is there also sort of a feasibility element to that? For example, according to these regs, this type of development would never pencil out for any developers, so it's not actually gonna result in more housing.
Yeah, excellent question. And, and it's the latter, right? We're gonna, we're gonna be somewhat limited in the sophistication to which we can do that analysis. And so, you know, we're not gonna be doing site-by-site pro formas, but we will have some sort of generic modeling capabilities so that we can, you know, essentially, we, we don't want communities to use zoning as a fig leaf. And I'm not suggesting that's the situation here by any means, but we don't want a community to use zoning as a fig leaf and say, well, no, we, we've allowed multifamily in this whole area. And if it's built out, it's gonna be, you know, four hundred and fifty units. We say, yeah, but it's, you've capped the height at two stories. It's, you know, you've capped the density at a, at a small number. No one is ever gonna build any one of these projects, so no, it's not real. So it's, it's, to, to the best degree that we can, at this scale, and given our geographic purview, we'll do some vetting to make sure that, that it's reasonable. And, and it's true on the other side, to be honest. I mean, I, I've worked a lot in the cities where, yeah, some of the zoning allows you to go to the sky, when at the end of the day, no one's gonna build anything concrete in, you know, in cities not to be named in, in the near future, it's gonna be state-built, right? So we'll, we'll have some of those assumptions based on local rents and, and local sales price and local cost of construction.
Thank you.
Try that, Tiga?
Try that to you, yeah?
Second question. Um, I just spoke with you about, um, assistance and planning.
Yeah.
Thinking through your four steps. Clearly, you know, there's the opt-in step. But at that point, is that where then the town sits down with you and, and, and or others and says, okay, here's what we wanna do. Here's as far as we've got the capacity to take it, but we need additions. So is that where you then would tap your various consultants and say, work with Old Sabre, let's hear what we can do?
Yeah. And, and to be, you know, to be clear, we still need to figure out some of the details on, you know, is that gonna be a hundred percent, uh, you know, given to the municipality? Is there gonna be some level of cost share? There, there's a lot of details there to work out, but yes, that is the stage at which we would be working together to figure out how far the municipality has been able to get on its own. What's holding it back from getting to the next step and what from our team we could mobilize to get through that hurdle.
Good. Thanks.
And then if anybody else had a question. So, so just looking at Old Sabre zoning, um, and, and David and I talked, we had a meeting before this meeting, um, we talked about some of the issues because we don't have sewers. It's all soil based. So for Old Sabre, if you were to opt in, and I'm gonna pick on the B one zone, which is Main Street, which I would consider part of our downtown, even though, you know, some areas may be a little bit further than the half a mile. Um, we put in regulations to allow for mixed use apartments and housing. You can put second stories. You can have multiple units. So a regulation like that may be something that we have in place that we can kind of extend. Either the, the downtown or potentially, and I know you can't commit.
Yeah.
Or we have incentive housing zoning regulations, which we are a little frustrated with. That may be something too, if they were to land, or is it just something you kind of draw the line? Or do we have to land the zones for zoning?
So.
Do your zones have to be exactly what's on the zoning map if it's a map change, so to speak?
Yeah. So, uh, I'll answer two different ways. Um, first, yeah, what you're describing is absolutely right, right? When we look at the existing zoning, we would try and figure that out together. If there's a zone that already, you know, is, is close or at where we would want it to be, that we would leverage that as the tool. Yes. That said, um, by statute, before we can enter into the MOU and, and develop the district boundaries, the zone that we have certified would be, you know, a housing growth zone must be enacted. Which isn't to say that you couldn't start, you know, let's, let's say, let's take the V one as an example, right? Let's say that we sit down and we, and we say, yeah, B one's good. We would be limited in drawing the district boundaries around where the B one is today. But then should it be mapped to someplace else, then we could change the district boundaries to encompass that other area.
No, that makes sense. So we could potentially with some of the regulations in place, we may qualify. And then work with you to kind of determine, okay, can we tweak things in areas that won't qualify? Expand that zone as we go. So it doesn't have to be perfect.
No, no. Yeah, we definitely, it's, that's a great question. Um, no, we, we wouldn't come in and say, here's, here's the standard that we ultimately wanna get to with you and we're not drawing the district boundaries until you reach that. No, we would, we would absolutely say, yeah, okay, here's where we start together based on what you have today. And here's how we'll evolve together and incrementally, you know, change the MOU, evolve the MOU over time.
So in a perfect world and a perfect municipality and, and you looked at everything, so this is great and you draw the zone. I think a lot of municipalities have the issue. It's the private property owners that don't budge. So there's, I think, a lot of opportunities to span, expand housing and diversity of housing, different types of housing. It's getting the developer or the property owner to buy it. So that's something else that you could help us.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I certainly don't wanna over promise on that because it's a, it's a tough one, but we will, we will do our best to help. Um, you know, and, and part of it, part of it might be matchmaking, you know, helping existing owners understand that they can retain an equity stake, you know, by partnering with a developer. Not having to take it on themselves, but could benefit on the upside, right? Maybe exploring some of those different models with folks, but we'll, we'll help as best as we can.
I think, Chris, that would be a similar challenge to the, to the way that, um, the railroads, excuse me, the way the railroads laid out there for us, as you, as you can see, as you look at the town, it's kind of cut us off. And, and so the backside, if you will, or the north side of the tracks, uh, as well as connecting to Meritor Way is a big infrastructure challenge, uh, uh, for us and, and maybe presents a real opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna, um, raise expectations, but I'm cautiously optimistic that as we identify those kinds of challenges that could unlock more housing opportunities in communities that, that have the support for it. Having, you know, a, an MRDA district with a strategy in place will make us all the more competitive to together seek out various state or federal funding for those pieces of infrastructure if we can't fund them on our own. Any other questions? Awesome.
I thought there'd be a lot more questions. I told our, our next agenda item to come at seven because I'm not really really. So can, can you send us that resolution when it's ready in the?
Yeah, it's ready on Sunday morning.
Okay, that's awesome.
Great. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to join us tonight.
Move that. So which one do you wanna move on to?
So I, um, let me just reach out to Joe Ren. I told him to be here at seven.
How are you? Did you see the videos now?
I'm gonna just take a five minute break and I'll. From media.
Michael's still here? There he is.
I'm still here.
We lost.
We'll be all right for now. I just, camera crews like to, um.
Peep around.
They were set up for having just a.
Jay step down and Michael sit in for himself. Okay. Um, so we are.
Regular?
Let's go to regular business. Let's talk about the minutes. Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes? Three minutes. A good second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains?
I assume I was not here.
I was not here. Any correspondence?
None.
Yes, just.
Oh, Christmas prayer?
Yeah. Thank you.
Gotta kill a lot of time here.
With that, let's, let's move on to the election of officers.
Will this be a good time to mention, uh, Senator Marks?
No, we'll do that after. So, um, election of officers, I'll take nominations for the office chair.
I place, um, Nick Crebos as chair.
Check that. Any others? Okay. Vice chair. I would nominate Douglas McCracken, although he's not here.
So what happens when you're not?
Any objection? Oops. Okay. And, um, for secretary?
Paul O'Kay.
Accept.
I couldn't.
Do you accept?
Yes.
Nominate for secretary?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right. Um, any other? Do we have to action to vote?
Yes, yes, yes. So you can vote, make a motion to.
Take a motion to vote for the slate of officers.
The candidate name was found, yeah.
So.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the slate of officers? Uh, Nick Crebos as chair, Douglas McCracken as vice chair and Paul O'Kay as secretary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Thank you very much. Okay. Now, I'll recite from Shakespeare.
Get a committee?
Yeah, both ones of the committee and reports, staff report.
So, um, your next meeting is at six o'clock. Um, we are gonna have a presentation, um, it'll be about an hour from six to seven, from Joe Russo, from the, um, Old Sabre Climate, Climate Resilient Climate Adaptation. I always mess up there. There are nonprofit C-level rise climate adaptation group that consists of a number of beach communities. Um, I am working on for that meeting, um, we will, there will be a joint meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Desegregate Connecticut has asked to be on your agendas um, to just talk about the work, live, ride bill and the changes since the last time we spoke. And then I thought it may be a good opportunity just for planning and zoning, just to have a, a general discussion since we'll be here for, um, all together to talk about housing and whatever else. Um, I may have one other speaker. Um, we're in a time right now that we're getting a lot of requests. Can I present? Can I present? Can I present? And, um, a lot of the presenters want to go to multiple commissions. So I've been trying to put this language, all boards and commissions are invited to attend. Um, just to avoid having more special meetings and, and just kind of try to maybe start a little bit early. But get a few speakers in and go on with regular business to try to limit everybody's nights out. Um, we do have quite a bit of things going on. The, um, forshore resiliency plan, um, we are still working with the consultant on edits. I may have mentioned to you, um, I have every Wednesday and Friday morning blocked through March um, with Westbrook and Plutton and Fenwick to try to get this document to where it needs to be. Um, right now, we have scheduled, I'll give you that date. Um, Monday, February twenty fourth, I did send out, um, a flyer at six o'clock at the middle school auditorium. There will be an outreach session for forshore. Um, Megan, who is on our commission, but is also the deputy director of River Cod. Um, she's been working, remember we had Thrive that came through, so, um, and a future meeting, we're gonna send some materials to you to review and put some preliminary comments, um, for Thrive on your regular meeting agenda. Megan's nice enough to do some brief presentations to planning and zoning for some feedback. And then today we were working on scheduling another follow-up presentation on Thrive. Um, the new twenty twenty four Long Island Sound Futures Fund grant, um, which we, we were awarded like December eighteenth. Um, I've already had to ask for an extension because they were hoping we would have a consultant and an RFP out for services. So, um, we've been scrambling to get that together and we will have, we have an interview panel, um, and a full timeline. That RFP went out last Thursday, so that's another thing we've been.
And that grant would be for what?
This is the, um, it'll be, it's a five hundred thousand dollar project to, uh, look at from Cold Spring Brook to Indian Town. It, it's not just the tide gate. It's the Cold Spring Brook, Hager Creek, Mud Creek, Chalker Beach, Marshes, the tide gate, um, marsh migration, um, beach nourishment. And there, there's a lot of different things. It's just kind of the more scientific part of the, um, of studying what's going on so that we get some ideas as to what the next steps would be to be shovel ready. But also to have that data to say, okay, you know, you really can't do X, Y, Z here because this is a, a bird migration area or the marshes eroding and dying. How do we fix? It's, there's a lot to it. It's a pretty complex study and grant. Um, so we hope to have a consultant hired in mid-February um, to get that going and to start in February. And then we anticipate that the project will be completed in August of twenty twenty six. So, we're working on that. It was, I'm sure there's, oh, for just housing task force, um, I do, I do still have your recommendations for Maria DeMarco. Um, and our building officials to come. I've been just trying to juggle as many speakers and things coming in. You are having a subdivision come in tonight. You have other business. Um, so we're, we're gonna have a lot going on. Um, and I expect, don't expect any meeting cancellations for a long time. We're gonna be busy. And, um.
I think Dennis has a recommendation for speaker for housing.
Thank you. Yeah. So I, I noticed that Senator Marks had been appointed a chairperson of the state housing authority. Uh, who runs the committee, I believe. So I thought with the local, uh, with the local connection there, that might be valuable in terms of informing, you know, how we work with the state.
Okay. I, we can send that request out?
Super.
Um, I know, like I said, I'll try to figure out how we're gonna schedule it. Uh, just as just a general follow-up, I know we, we kind of got off topic a little bit where we were talking about everything but our list of priorities, um, in our, our last housing task force meeting. Um, I did talk to Megan a little bit, um, and I have started doing a few things that I'll get ready for you. Um, the first thing is that I did pull the old plan or survey from our affordable housing, um, plan that was in twenty twenty. Um, I'm working now to see what those questions are and try to transform them. Um, the thought would be maybe to have a little bit more of an interactive survey for our public outreach. So that, um, I know Bob Friedman had talked about having, you know, different types of housing. Do you like to see housing like this or housing like this? Um, and allow people to interact, but I also thought it would be interesting to use the surveys a little bit of an education tool. So, you know, you get a survey and you answer the normal questions. But having someone say, well, how much do you think a rental is in Old Sabre? A, B, C, D? And then once they answer, whether they're incorrect or correct, it'll actually give you a fact and say, the reality of it is most rents go for twenty eight hundred and have it there. So we're not just asking questions and people go away to try to have it as more of an educational tool where, um, I'm at the seven o'clock. So have that as more of an educational housing survey, not just us collecting data, but also a little bit of, uh, some questions maybe about who's responding to these. Um, you know, typically we have a survey. It's, well, what's your household income? Do you own your home and so forth? But I, but I think it'd be interesting to see, you know, have you ever collected heat assistance? Have you ever, you know, just kind of to see who's answering. So we learn a little bit about the folks who are answering these housing surveys, you know, as we go forward with the feedback. So I'm working on that and those questions. Uh, Megan and I had a meeting, um, and we talked a little bit about um, ADUs and the brochure, but we have some bigger ideas. Um, so some thoughts of maybe partnering a little bit with some regional educational efforts. Uh, we have a meeting hopefully scheduled in the next month or so. So the public outreach, I'm working on it behind the scenes once questions and things are put together, um, and I'm putting that into a PowerPoint. Sarah McWhickie's great. She's been helping out with that. And, um, then we, at least we can talk about some of the questions, but the thought would be not just to gather survey information, also to use it as a tool. Um, I did think a little bit about going through, the last time we did this, we did a lot of paper surveys. Um, and we did multilingual surveys. Um, we did not get one response um, in a language other than English. And we did get a number of paper surveys, but that was mainly from the senior center. Um, so. So the thought would be maybe just to go with the online and put some information, more paper pamphlets in that when we actually get to a point where we're gonna have people come in. Just some thoughts. I mean, this is where.
When you said the senior center, you mean estuary council?
The, I'm sorry, the, the senior center. So the last time we left it at the food pantry, the senior center, the senior housing, the estuary, we left information in hotels. We really didn't get a lot of, as much, we got a lot of paper feedback, but it was mostly from senior housing and the senior center, okay, the estuary.
Okay. I'm just wondering if the estuary council had a PC, if they would make that available to people.
We can, we can.
You know, that kind of thing?
I, I guess, I think we can maybe either that or have someone, we can have someone go speak to them. Have a meeting and take that information in that way. But I'm not sure, after all the effort we took putting boxes all over town and surveys and pamphlets. I mean, the library, you know, usually Parks and Rec will stick something on the door. You know, but it was QR code, get your survey website. I just don't know if it's worth.
But I think the library could do something with PCs or tablets to facilitate that. Yeah, as opposed to going with the paper. I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
We need to move away from the paper. Once you get the paper, you have to put that into where you're compiling all the information.
Which, which we did. And the thought was to be as inclusive as possible in the event someone didn't have a smartphone or a PC. So that someone could just fill it out and someone would pick up those results in a box. But I, I don't, I don't feel it was that successful. If you want me to go that route again with paper, we can.
Are, are we able to do anything to kind of get the attention of people who maybe are not here yet but considering moving here? So for instance, maybe working with agencies or rentals and trying to get input from people who have somehow come to look for a place to live in Old Saver. Kind of get their input as to what they might be looking for.
I, I think we can do that. I was kind of catering it more to, our last discussion was after a member of the public said, well, when are the residents gonna speak and the people who work here? I mean, but we, we could do that, that as well. I think we're gonna get people, the last time we did get some responses for people who lived in town, worked in town. Maybe we'll get a little bit out of real estate agents. I guess, I don't know, we can change it a little bit if that's, it, it's really up to you. So let me kind of plug away at it. I didn't forget about it. We're working on it. Megan and I are gonna meet. She had actually some ideas of how not to reinvent, reinvent the housing brochure. And so I've already started running with that. I just have a lot of irons in the fire right now. And, but we're, we're moving along and go from there. So I don't know if you have anything else for me?
I mean, anything we can borrow from River Cod when it comes to housing? I think that's a good, good thing.
We share.
Yes. We're gonna be, this month at our housing committee meeting, we're gonna be talking about what resources we can be providing collectively for the year going forward as well. So I'm putting these things at the top of the list.
So, just Bob, I know you just joined us. So the meeting started at six for the MRDA presentation. There was a little bit of confusion as to the start time. So you kind of missed the key part of the housing task force. And since we finished so early, our planning commission regular agenda items where we've jumped to the end for staff committee representative reports. So if you'd like to stay for the planning meeting and listen to a referral from the Connecticut Cancer Foundation for a text amendment and a coastal site plan review, that's our planning items for tonight. But I think you can just review the, the video once it comes out. So we'll give you an early night tonight. Hi, Joe. You know, I will. Good night, Bob.
May I make one more comment about the survey? I, from my mind, a lot of the questions, it were, uh, uh, limited you to the options that they presented. In other words, there was a list and you had to prioritize. And there was no way of saying that you had another idea or that none of them was acceptable or there was no way to really, um, a, a, a number of the questions were sort of, there was an implicit assumption that you concurred with, you know, the, all the items or the way they presented it, or if, if you, you were forced to itemize them instead of saying, well, number, this, 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 this are basically the same to you. You had, they forced you to prioritize. Anyway.
So, so this is gonna be kind of a completely different survey.
That's why I made.
So what'll happen is, once I get a little bit more organized, then we can go look at the results from the previous survey. You know, a lot of times surveys too, it's the same thing. Do you live in town? Do you work in town? How much you make? If you want A, B, C, D. And the thought would be at least to have, hey, you know, fun fact, did you know we have forty accessory dwellings that work? And try to make it a little bit more exciting as exciting as you can make a survey. So, I have those questions, working on the other questions, and then we can all take a look at them together. But we have a lot going on right now. So anyway. That's what representative reports, I guess, is what that, unless you have more for me as staff.
Any representative reports? Well, move on to referral number eight, petition to amend zoning regulations, materials on a desk screen note.
Cam first. Does someone else is gonna come for the other one? She's gonna come earlier too, but.
I expect something's gonna go longer, you know, and more like any more questions.
Hey, that's, that's fine, any of us, right? Make our night a little shorter.
Yeah. So we'll move on to new business then. Leboy application for coastal site plan review for construction of a forty-seven hundred square foot two-story house.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Joe, Ron, professional engineer of Indigo here in town. I know that this commission is not used to seeing these applications very often. But as Chris will tell you, whether the zoning commission, PBA, or planning, planning. Coastal site planner can. So, this project, just a little background with. Background, if you look in the, the tail yellow, there are two houses on the property now. We went to zoning board of appeals last year and we proposed to remove those two homes with the, the knowledge of this, this other plan, but we needed a variance for this detached garage. So we did, we did get the variances necessary for that garage. The variances were generally because this pink line is the fifty-foot buffer from the tidal wetlands. So, so it was partially within that. So we did get those variances in that garage is, that had its own coastal site plan application. And the demolition of these two homes and all of that has been approved previously through ZDA. So now the second phase of the project is we're proposing the house. So again, removing the two houses, one has three bedrooms, one has four bedrooms, so total of seven bedrooms. Removing those, removing their septic systems, both houses that are there now, of course, are not FEMA compliant. So the new house will be, and the garage, by the way, hundred percent FEMA compliant. FEMA and the town flood ordinance, which adds two more feet to the FEMA elevation. So both structures will be compliant with those. There is also a deck on the back and an in-ground pool. You can see we're very limited on this property that has fairly large size, but we're limited by this fifty-foot in the tidal wetlands to this area. So we kept everything, all the physical improvements out of that, other than the garage, which I had mentioned earlier, we got variance support. So everything is landward of the fifty-foot buffer line. It's, the septic system undoubtedly is close. There is a little bit of fill that cheats over that line, the fifty-foot line. But we are, we already have approved activity to remove those two structures and then fill in the, you know, the basement and the foundation anyways. So that's not really anything new either. Really, the main thing is the, the pool, the house, the deck, and the septic system. So the septic tank is just off of the bottom right corner of the house with the label B on it. And then the leaching fields go up along the, the buffer line here. Strategically kept out of the fifty-foot area. So all the physical improvements on the property are outside of that fifty-foot buffer, except for what we already got variances for. So this application is for coastal area management. So we provided the application, we provided the plan to you for your review. In general, because we're removing two structures, placing two back, we have a crush down driveway. So all those things together, we're attempting to balance the site, the amount of roof area on site. There was some asphalt, broken asphalt before. All that's going away. It's all crushstone driveway. And we're bringing everything out of that buffer. You can see this one house, this three-bedroom house was almost fully within the buffer and very close to the wetlands. So that's coming out and then, you know, that area will be allowed to be, to that, be revegetated. There's some, some like low brush and grasses and stuff in that area right now. And that would remain. You can see our, our silk fence, the SF line. That silk fence line is generally the limit of the construction. So on the landward side of that line would be the limit of the construction to allow the demolition of the structures, the construction of that, of the new proposed house. And that's it. So we have all the ENS erosion, sanitation control taken care of on the plan. And we have pulled everything as much as possible out of the fifty-foot buffer and used pervious surfaces where we can and made everything FEMA compliant. So we tried to be as consistent with the coastal land act as possible. So do you have any questions?
This previously approved garage, is that staying? Are you rebuilding it?
Uh, it's not even built yet.
It's just a slab.
The slab is not even there.
It's not even there yet. Right. Okay. But it's been, it was previously approved.
Yes, yeah, the applicant, since that was the only need for variances, they chose to do this in two phases. The first phase was to just get the garage approved, make sure they can get the variances to that, which they did. And then they went into phase two, which was just the coastal site plan application for the house.
A sort of tangential question. So I think a FEMA compliance is putting the house up on stilts, if you will. So what do you do with the garage? Do you put it on a mound because you wanna get it up in the air somewhere?
Nope. So there, there is a lower level of what we call flood level under the house as well. So they have a, they have a garage under the house. They're utilizing that flood space with a house above for garage. So they come in and they park under the house here. This garage, it is not, it doesn't have to be elevated. It has to have flood vents. And then anything up to that, we call it the DFE. It's the FEMA base flood elevation. BFE, B is in Leboy. BFE plus the two feet per ton of Old Saver, which is the design flood elevation or DFE. So all the materials in that garage up to that DFE have to be flood resistant materials. And they can't have any electrical or mechanical equipment below that elevation. So all the switches, plugs, outlets, anything has to be.
So he can use that as a garage. You can have a garage.
Absolutely. Just like the underside of the house. It can't be used as living space, so it's best to use as a garage or shed.
And it, it has a deed restriction. So the permit goes on the deed and it says you can't finish it for living space. There's certain restrictions in some of these garages, depending on where they are, the, the walls collapse in a flood. So the water can, it's, it can get tricky.
Yeah, this one, this one specifically is located in an A zone. So the V zone, as Chris had, Chris had mentioned, is generally more closer to the shoreline where you have wave velocity action. And rather than having flood vents, or you could have both, but then you have walls. You have house on stilts or areas. If they choose to want to have walls for privacy or containment of stuff, those are especially designed so under the hydrostatic pressure, they, they cave in. And then the water can go underneath the house freely. This is an A zone, which is still water, so there's no wave velocity. But still, it's an A eleven, still water flood eleven. But we have to add the tunnel holes here are two feet, so we're at thirteen. So this structure and that structure are FEMA flood compliant up to that FEMA plus two feet. Most cams are, some get a little tricked.
Whoever makes the motion, I can give you the cam wording if you decide to approve.
Negative motion to approve. Can I get the second? Can I get the language?
So motion to approve the coastal site plan application for Leboy twenty-three and twenty-six Boiser Point Avenue because the application is consistent with all applicable coastal policies. It makes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstains?
Thank you.
Move on to the next item? Okay. Petition to amend the zoning regulations to allow for materials on a desk screen note.
Thank you. Again, Joe Ren, professional engineer of Indigo here in town for the record. In the audience now, the timing worked out perfectly. Jane Ellis. Jane is the executive director of the Connecticut Cancer Foundation at fifteen Markane Street, across the market farm. All of you are familiar. If you're not familiar with, with who they are, what they are, you can find plenty of information on the website and Jane could sit here for, I'm sure, hours and tell you about folks as they've helped all through the years and so forth. But you all may, most of you or all of you live in town and you've lived in town for some time. So you probably remember this as a little grouse purchase, this particular property. And I'm talking about, starting to talk about a specific property because I want to get into the generation of where we are and why we're here, what we're asking. So the grouse purchase here had a fire, if you all recall, while the roof was all burned out. The building extended way back into the property and that portion of it was burned out. The Cancer Foundation at the time was called the Connecticut Sports Foundation. And the reason why it was called the Connecticut Sports Foundation is Jane's late husband was a major league baseball player. See the World Series shirt over there so you know a little bit about baseball. And he played, John Ellis was his name. He played, you may remember, he played for the Yankees and the Indians for the period of years. He, his career ended early because of lymphoma. And right at that time, and Jane can give you a better history if you need it, but right at that time, he started the Connecticut Sports Foundation to help people that are restricted by this disease. So he and Jane started this foundation that was almost forty years ago. Right? Thirty-something, thirty-seven years ago, when they started that. John Hessens passed, two years ago then? Three, oh my goodness. The time goes by very fast. So three years ago, John, John passed. But his mission was to create a foundation with his, you know, the likes of Yogi Berra and so forth. People that he knew that would help him generate money to help people or families that are restricted by cancer. And over the years, they've helped many, many people. What they do, they're a five-one-C-three, they're nonprofit. And what they do is they do several different activities throughout the year, fundraisers, including a large one at Mobyhead Sun where we get a lot of the pro players there and so forth to have a dinner, and a silent auction, which is great, up into a couple of them, myself. And really enjoyed it, but they generate a lot of funds. And all of those funds, other than not. But they generate a lot of funds and all of those funds, other than operational costs, all those funds go, they choose, how many families are there approximately?
Almost 600.
600 families to this point.
Annual.
Annual? Wow. Okay.
Yeah, over 8,000 to this point.
Over 8,000 families they've helped and approximately 600 per year. So they'll choose these families. Maybe the dad has cancer and the family needs to help pay their mortgage or, um, maybe the children have cancer and the parents can't really work much because they have to do with their children. So I just wanted to establish the history of it. So they, they purchased this property. We did a plan back in 2016 and, uh, which took down where the old grouse purchase was. We left the historical part of the, the main house. It was very intricately designed, adding the gallery space. I don't know if any of you have been inside the building, but it's absolutely doable. Big gallery space, high open ceilings, uh, full-size, life-size pictures of baseball players and so forth. And there, it's really well done. That's where Jane's office is. They have some art gallery space and the old historical home, so it's a really enjoyable place and they invite anybody and any, any of the public can watch her on a daily basis close to the train spot was a great location for them. So they built everything out. We had to do a special exception plan for zoning commission, which we went through, we got all the approvals. And during construction, um, most of the site was built out. Their landscaper, who is Torsten Stone Garden, very graciously said, "We will do your landscaping per for at no cost." So they landscaped the site, all of the, all of the landscaping that was proposed that we had to do in the parking lot islands, on the perimeter, along the front of the building. And what they did, they came up with a schematic for the front of the building. And what they wanted to do there is take concrete pavers, make a tiny little replica of a baseball diamond, um, and then use those bricks for cancer donor bricks. So people can stamp their name or someone in memory of and a year and date, and they can go back and visit that brick when they're nearby. So that was all established, was in place, but it wasn't part of the original plan. So, and the reason why I have to rehash all this is because I think every member on this board is different than was back then. So just rehashing, um, and trying to be as brief as possible, they came in, they built sidewalks, um, six-foot sidewalk and then five-foot sidewalk across to the back. And then they built that small replica of the baseball diamond. There were plans at one time to do kind of like a rotating ball type fountain in the center where people can come in off the sidewalk, congregate, uh, and so forth. But that wasn't part of the original approved plan by zoning. So when that was going in, they got notice that that wasn't part of the original plan and, and you have to remove it. So we tried, we went through zoning board of appeals to see if we could get a variance because the reason was we, you have a front landscape area and within this zone, the entire 25 feet from your property line all the way back is supposed to be just landscaping items only. At the time, the definition included or excluded, I should say, what they called ornamental plazas. But ornamental plazas weren't really defined in the regulation. No one really used it before. So we had assumed that would be an ornamental plaza. But again, it was a part of the plan, so we needed to do a modification to that one. So we went back to zoning before ZVA, we went back to zoning. We asked for a minor modification to allow that to stay because now it's built, it's in the ground. They said no. There were some other modifications that were taken care of. The only remaining one was that small baseball diamond area. And this sidewalk was 16. They do allow five-foot sidewalks within the front landscape area for pedestrian movement. So this sidewalk had to be reduced in width a foot. And all this area here that you can see a little bit darker hatch was to be removed. So we went to zoning board of appeals and zoning board of appeals unanimously granted a variance to allow us to keep it. Zoning at the time didn't like that motion, so they went after ZVA and.
Can I just interject? I know there's a history, but you're here, so the, the planning commission tonight is here despite the history of this applicant to say if this petition to amend the zoning regulations, which applies to all properties in the pedestrian note, is consistent with the plan of development. I know there's a very long history. I know this has been referred back to court for enforcement. We can go on and on about it, but it's not just this specific property that the commission is handling. I just want to kind of move back in.
And that's why I started with that, that it's, it's a specific property, but there's a reason for that. And this is where it generated, and that's why Jane Ellis, the executive director of Connecticut Cancer Foundation is the applicant for this to occur within the town of Old Sabre. So I'm just going to pass these pictures around. These are just simple Google Maps showing you the existing condition, all landscaping that was put in around the front. You'll see that it looks very attractive and these types of things can look very attractive, even if they were on a townwide basis within the pedestrian note. So if things can look like that, I think we would look, we would want to improve a lot of our properties in the business zones to look like that. So we've tried various things over the years since ZVA and zoning fought each other. The judge agreed with zoning, so overturned the variance. So then we were back to square one. So since then, a lot of time has gone by. They recently got a notice saying we need to resolve this. I think they're still operational under a temporary CO, I believe, right?
No.
No? Okay. So they have a CO?
No.
No.
Okay. So that, that's the point we're at. So once.
Can we go back to how the regulation impacts the zone? I know you want to talk about it and I'm just saying that for five years we've gone through this. So the commission here tonight is to look at how this is consistent with the plan of development for all properties in the pedestrian note for the check.
For another system.
And I'm not trying to cut you off, I'm just trying to cut a direct, the commission is to.
Yeah, and I want them to be in that direction too. It's just everyone's new and it's good if they, they know why we're here at this point. So now we'll get into the townwide thing. So I was talking to Jane and I came up with an idea. We, we talked about several ideas over the years, but I came up with an idea that would also assist other properties and other applicants with this particular issue. We had another problem with, with Wild Birds. Wild Birds Unlimited turned from enterprise rental car to Wild Birds and then that changed, even though it was kind of retail to retail. They had some pavements within their 25-foot landscape that even though they needed that for churning movement for larger vehicles, that wanted to be green. So we had to cut back the newer asphalt on that site to get the 25-foot, 100% landscape green space across the front edge. And they had to cut that back and put grass pavers to get grass to grow through and so forth. That's just another example. But what we came up with, it's, it's kind of straightforward. It's very simple. And it allows just this, but not only on this site, but all other sites within the pedestrian note. Not necessarily all sites within the business zones, but just within the pedestrian notes along Route 1 that are well-defined on the sidewalk plan and in Old Sabre. So it's, it's very short. We wanted to keep it simple because a lot of times tax amendments get wordy, they get long, they're very confusing, hard to understand. Tried to keep this as simple as possible. So what we're proposing is any, um, any property within a pedestrian note, instead of being, have, having to be 100% fully natural landscape material like grass, mulch, trees, shrubs and so forth, um, up to 25%, but no more than 25% of that area can be utilized for ornamental plazas and walkways, things that pedestrians can utilize and benefit from. So it's worded, um, and this is, there's already a section 63.3.1(c)(3) and C under materials, uh, we added the 3 under the materials. And this would just get inserted into the zoning regulations and it says specifically for sites within a pedestrian note, which this is, um, the commission may allow within the front landscape area in its discretion, dry-laid concrete paver plazas, walkways and other hardscape materials, which shall not exceed 25% of the front landscape area. So just off the top of my mind, thinking about a few new, more newly developed properties, we have the new Dunkin' Donuts, which has this bench area and the stone wall and the concrete area. That doesn't comply to 100% natural landscaping, but with this regulation change, it would bring this into conformance. You can see that on the same site, on the other side of the driveway, there are two more of those areas. And they're great. They're, they're concrete areas with benches, right? It's, it's great. We all want that and for pedestrians to utilize it. But that's not allowed in the front landscape area. So it would bring this site into conformance if we have this regulation.
Question, does the sidewalk count towards the 25%? It will not. Oh, okay.
It does not now, it's exempt.
Right. Up to five feet wide. So if we have a six-foot wide sidewalk, that would, that extra foot would count towards the 25%.
Oh.
These two sites, are they not conformant or were they?
I'm not going to get into the details of all of these. We're here to look at.
No, I know that, but I just wanted.
To amend. I think I don't, I'd have to go through and to recall how, whether it was part of a sidewalk project for the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes. Okay. So one other quick example that we all know is Wayback Burger. The Wayback Burger has the concrete walkway patio where people could sit and eat. Not necessarily like pedestrian congregation, but customers sit and eat there right at the intersection within 25 feet. So this is another site and I'm sure if we went through there, many, many more. So consistent with planning conservation development, we're bringing more sites with this simple rate change, we're bringing in more sites into conformance into either full conformance or better conformance of the regulations. And as a result, it will allow this to stay because this is less than 25% of that front landscape area. And you can see with a combination of materials of the pictures that I passed around there and these as well. I mean, you know, this site is nicely landscaped. It's, it's attractive and it was done well, but it doesn't fully meet the regulation unless we amend it. So it's not spot zoning, it's not something that only benefits this property owner and on this particular property or that particular zone. Anything in the pedestrian note, uh, ornamental plazas, walkways, things like that benefit pedestrians. And they're connected to the sidewalks and we're in a pedestrian note. So we think it makes a lot of sense. With that, you know, if you have any more, if you have any additional questions, I think it's simple and helps us bring in more properties to conformance.
I have a question, Chris. So, so this area, whatever location it is, this area of a, of a private property is still private property, right? It's not public access.
Correct.
Right? So, so if there is a jungle gym, kids maybe could climb on it.
Someone could put a fence and lock it off.
Say no one's allowed or only we can use it. Right? So it's, it's kind of a 50/50 in that, in that respect in terms of how accessible it is.
Yeah, it just allows properties, and there are many, many examples, but it allows properties. You know, if you, if you have a special exception, you do a redevelopment project like the old bowling alley was and you put your sidewalk and it gives you the opportunity to add these concrete spaces to have benches so people can rest or enjoy the traffic going by or enjoy the site, whatever they may be. You know, there are plenty of benches along the site, but it would allow that for new projects and bring the existing projects into conformance. That's why I think it's, it's really beneficial. You know, we keep going through properties, you know, I, because we've been doing this for a long time, I know several other ones, but these were just two really good recent examples that make a lot of sense. So I don't, you know, I don't really see any disadvantage of this, whether it's used by pedestrians or not. It's the front landscape area and there's always a sidewalk requirement in the pedestrian note. So if there's not a sidewalk already, there will be a sidewalk, so they will be pedestrian accessible. I mean, yes, at the private property line, someone could put a fence. Most people choose not to. They usually want to attract people into their business and into their property. Jane would love if people came off the train and congregated there and came to the museum and threw a few pennies in the donation box. She would love that traffic through there. And that makes it more attractive rather than just having a business-like sidewalk. It makes it more attractive for people to, to congregate. We did talk about, you know, um, having some placards there to talk about the history of that intersection, you know, and the building across the street and so forth. That, you know, that would be an owner, a property owner discretion. We talked to the historic commission about that a little bit. They didn't really want to get so involved, but I thought that would be a, a cool component of it as well. But this simplifies all of it. If they want to put placards, they can to attract people there and, but they don't have to. This just allows any property in pedestrian note to have up to 25% hardscape. We, we originally put dry-laid pavers so that it has a, a stormarm benefit. But in talking with the attorneys, I said that's to put, or other hardscape materials at the discretion of the commission because if they think like these, if they think these are no good idea to have concrete that's impermeable, then it would be up to the commission to allow this rather than, we didn't want to hold them to dry-laid pavers. So, and if we didn't include other hardscape materials, this would not be in conformance. So that little provision makes all of this in. Questions?
Megan?
Megan?
Thanks. So I like the idea of more pedestrian space. I do agree with Dennis though, that the way this is written, it is still private property. It's not necessarily for the benefit of pedestrian access. I also don't see that it has to necessarily be connected to the sidewalk. It's just 25% of the front landscaping, um, so that doesn't necessarily make it pedestrian accessible either. I also am concerned that the way it's written is a little bit too subjective for commissioners when we, I, you know, I like that it's up to my discretion, but I don't know that all applicants would be happy with the standard being what the planning commission feels like or the zoning commission feels like. It's, it doesn't provide a lot of standard, I don't think, or what we would see coming out of this. And lastly, I, I feel that 25% is, is quite a lot potentially.
If I could reply to some of those, thank you for your comments. One, we have no problem adding a provision that has to be connected to the sidewalk. We felt that being within 25 feet of the property line in a site that has to, is required to have a sidewalk, just would take care of that itself. But we have no, we're already connected to the sidewalk and, you know, these other sites are already connected to the sidewalk. So it would still make these conforming and make that conforming if we added a provision in there that it has to be connected to the town sidewalk. That's not a problem at all.
The bricks that are there now, the skates that are there now, they, they have names on them currently?
So remember, this is a zone change for every property in the pedestrian note along Route 1. So just.
One second, Mike will listen to that.
I'm just, sorry.
That's okay.
Just trying to keep you on track.
Right. We need to focus.
A total regulation amendment versus.
We're changing the reg.
A specific situation.
It's going to affect everything along Route 1. Yeah. I'm just trying to understand what is practical in terms of could this be? Yeah, okay. Thanks. Bye.
Yeah, and I sort of concur with, I think, what Dennis and Megan were saying here is that I like the idea of having it connecting and some of the examples that Joe was giving, like those sidewalk benches, those are connected to the sidewalk, they're also open to the public, they create kind of a, a third space for someone to kind of stop and hang out and rest, which is kind of the goal of the pedestrian note, to encourage pedestrians to walk around. And if we create this, but don't then also make it open to the public, it's not really sort of increasing that pedestrian attractiveness to the location here. So I kind of like the idea of definitely requiring it to be connected. I almost wonder, should we connect, require it to be, you know, open to the public, at least open to the public during business hours? I thought something could put in there. And I was, I think to your other comment, Megan, is that the. I don't know if that's something you can put in there, and I was, I think to your other comment, Megan, is that the, okay, the other risk of that section. This would be the only one that would have an in its discretion, the other two subsections in that area are all just requirements for the applicant, not discretionary or sort of options here. So I, I like the consistency, and I like the idea of making it open to the public.
Yeah, really, so this is a materials section, right, so we put, and we were advised by the attorney to put in its discretion, so that it would give the zoning commission. If they, if they felt hard concrete was the right material for that particular project, then that could be allowable. If they felt, you know, more of a residential feel type of to a business, that dry laid pavers for stormwater would be more beneficial, then they, they have that discretion. If we, if we say dry laid pavers only, then it doesn't bring these other sites into conformance. So, we try to be comprehensive to bring in all those other sites as well. We have no, we, we want this to be directly connected, we want to invite people, and if there's, if there's like a pedestrian, what do we call that? Like pedestrian furniture type requirement, if, if you take advantage of this, you have to put at least one bench or something, that's not a problem. They were thinking about putting benches anyways. So, you know, this one has seating, this one has several benches, so that would make those consistent as well.
Mr. Chairman. I would consider hard materials another major design element in fixing up a front yard, if you will. However, we are talking about Route One and the pedestrian node, which is really limited to mostly commercial buildings. I mean, I, I guess there are a few private residences. But I mean, where we have the caveat of having the commission pass judgment, if you will, on the plan, I think that that, I, I don't see a downside to it. That's my position, I just, I, I like the idea of that additional element, design element.
Can I just make a, just a few general comments? So, I mean, the first thing is that the landscaping section of the regulations has minimum requirements for front landscaping, perimeter landscaping, so forth. It's to have pervious materials on properties and landscaping, so that everything is not hardscape. This is a front landscaped area, and it's a proposal for twenty-five percent. As far as an overall regulation, there is no guarantee without a permanent easement. That the public will be able to access any other proposed patios or, or areas within that front landscaped area. So I just want you to, to think about that, you're talking about what the public could enter. So you could have an application, the property owner could build some type of a patio for public access. Say it's open to the public, and then all of a sudden, somebody trips and hit their, hits their head and they close it off. It's not going to be public forever without an easement. So I'm just bringing that across as you consider the proposed regulation in progress.
So we have no problem adding that provision in there either, that there has to be an easement.
But really, if you have a front lawn or decorated with shrubs and all to a business. You wouldn't expect the public to be walking around in the, on the grass or in the shrubs. So I don't, I don't understand the concern about public access. I mean, this is about decorating the, the front, you know, the front area of a building, I think.
So this is about landscaping, so the front, the front landscaped area is not really an area that people congregate in. You don't go in front of the Seabrook Shopping Center and, and congregate in the area of front landscaping.
Right.
So this is a proposal to have twenty-five percent of the front landscaping area of a shopping center or another business with a patio or somewhere where people could congregate.
Well, I don't think they're using the word patio, they just say.
I'm just, well, they're using hardscape and other type of materials.
But, well.
Or a bench or somewhere to rest.
So, so, so two, two points, someone mentioned before the fact that along divisions, business no longer one, they're mostly businesses, right? But businesses want to attract clients into their business. So they're going to want people to come off the sidewalk, whether they're walking or biking or whatever, and come into their business, to make it inviting. Yes, the old Seabrook Shopping Center doesn't have that, but it was built a long time ago to no regs at all. And if it was redeveloped today, it would have stuff like this, that would be inviting, the landscaping and the bench features and so forth. That would invite people to, to recreate there, to rest or to whatever. At that point, sit and enjoy their coffee or whatever it might be. But right now, there's really no good access, and there's really no reason for them to, to recreate there. So, businesses want to draw people in off the sidewalk, the easement is no problem, that could be, that could be easily put in there, that there's a direct sidewalk connection to the public sidewalk. And that there's a, there's a permanent easement added to the deed that allows the public to access that front landscaped area. Or the hardscape portion of the front landscaped area, you know, a lot of people trips and around through the shrubs and the flowers and so forth. But to those areas, and Jane would love that. Jane, you know, just in her particular case, she would love people to come there and sit and, you know, watch traffic and come and enjoy the, the building itself. I think there's, you know, there are a lot of positives, I, I don't really see with some minor adjustments, I don't really see many negatives at all, or per many.
So for consistency with the plan, the commission needs to determine which sections of the regulations this is consistent with. Doug's absent, so.
I'm kind of struggling with that.
Doug's asleep, I'm trying to jump into that.
Yeah, well, one, one section I think would be that we're making several more properties in town conforming to the regulations. So we're reducing existing nonconformities, eliminating.
I don't think that's part of, that's not part of the planning and conservation development.
Oh, usually, usually it is, I could look through yours, you guys know better than I do. But usually it is making the properties more conforming, is usually a general course of the planning and conservation development, so I just assume that.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about in Section Three, interconnectivity. Improved safety pedestrian and non-motorized transportation. I'm struggling with the twenty-five percent, that seems like a lot.
I think the one that might comply with the most there, and it could be, I think the economic development policy too, talks about complete streets and landscaped aesthetically. This is going to be the section I think we'd be looking at, but I think we thought we'll look, this is actually, you know, encourage pedestrians to come and use and, and be in an area, though. And I always had a question about like just hardscape, like is that imply like a patio or a paver, could a hardscape just be like a wall or, or something else?
It's generally intended for something that you could walk on. So whether it's a patio, or, you know, something like this, or a walkway through that area. You know, maybe for some reason like this entryway, someone wanted to do a six-foot wide walkway, but you only allow, you only can put a five-foot wide walkway. So if they wanted that extra width of the walkway, they can have that too, but it's generally something you could walk on, not necessarily with walls. I mean, if walls are done for landscaping purposes, they could be attractive. You know, similar to this.
I'm just saying, a wall's not as inviting for a pedestrian, but would it count, would that count as hardscape in this twenty-five percent? Or should we be more precise about what we're actually trying to allow and do here?
Yeah, I, you know, it can be included in that percentage, that's not a problem.
So the thing is, when you apply a percentage, it depends on the percentage of the front landscaping area. So if, say you had a lot that had five hundred feet of frontage, and you're required to have a twenty-five foot landscaped area. And you were to say twenty percent of that area, that means you could have a twenty-five hundred square foot patio in the front landscaping area. So it's all relative to the size of the frontage of the lot, it's not necessarily going to be a ten by twelve area with the regulation written.
Well, we also, well, we also.
So you're reducing the amount of landscaping vegetation-wise as it goes more to a hardscape.
Right, so, and I was going to say, and I'm just kind of picking on, there's different, you have the zoning regulations, there's different requirements. So if you have a twenty-five foot landscaped area in the front of your building, there's nothing that would prohibit an applicant from having a sidewalk from the street through that twenty-five feet to have an area for a gathering space or a patio. I mean, think of Big Y between the buildings, that building and Coles, there's a patio and seating and areas where people can congregate. So, you know, as you review this, within the twenty-five, within the front landscaped area. Just consider that twenty-five percent is based on how big that lot is. So this could be potentially, you know, a.
Very large.
Very large.
Hardscape.
Hardscape.
So a couple of things that, number one, within the pedestrian note, there are not a lot of lots that have five hundred feet of frontage. So most have hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred kind of max in through there, we could easily resolve that by putting an offset in here. So twenty-five percent of the front landscaped area, or a certain number that you think is reasonable, whichever is less.
Yeah, I was going to say up to, I mean, like as your point, like not every site is going to be equal, right? So, you know, twenty-five percent.
So if you're taking a total of thousand square feet, we could put twenty-five percent of probably four thousand square feet, whichever is less. And that would resolve that, for sure. And we also can do, we would be willing to do twenty percent if that is a better number as well. So a fifth of the front landscaped area, rather than a quarter.
And not to exceed a thousand.
Yes, and that was a random number, so if you know something else is more appropriate.
And again, I, I go back to the pavers, I know they're currently laid, and I'm not getting into that, but hardscape, softscape, I mean, is there an in-between that allows, you know, some more, something a little more flexible to, to, to these nodes? Something a little greener, something that has some drainage, something that?
That's why we started with the dry laid pavers, so they're on sand and they're not cemented in, so that the water can go through.
But you mentioned a driveway or, or something earlier, they had grass coming through it, right? I mean, they're, they're blocking pavers, but they're allowed, you know, grass to go through, there's something else.
But it's different than having pavers that are pervious.
A hundred, no, a hundred percent.
A hundred percent. So, yeah, I mean, you do have the areas in between the pavers, but the pavers don't absorb water like grass or landscape.
Of course, yeah, so they have the quarter inch, you know, entrances between the pavers, and then there's, when they're new and they're installed properly, there's like a twelve inch drainage base below them. So all the water can absorb into that and get below that, so the frost doesn't keep it. We, we have videos and pouring torrential rainstorms, just on this particular instance, and there's no runoff. It's just, it, it's all even across the patio, and there's no flooding of the adjacent property because of that. That's why we started with the dry laid pavers for the drainage reason. But because of these other sites and trying to make them conform too, we just included all materials. But that's what we said is at the discretion of the commission, because from here on out, maybe the commission says under, you know, with our discretion, we don't think we're going to use concrete anymore, we want something that drains better, dry laid pavers or fully pervious pavers or something like that, it's totally fine.
Yeah, I think there's a history here that puts all of us in a bad position, right? Because.
That, that's why we shouldn't be talking about the history and the specific site, this is overall.
Our goal is to look forward and say, what do we want from our sites, and how do we want those to interact with our sites, and?
Exactly, and, and this is completely friendly, it's not contentious anymore, it's just a friendly amendment to the regulations, that's simple. That can help other businesses, can be better for pedestrians, and bring other sites into conformance. I mean, it's just, you know, across, across the board, there are a lot of, with, with some tweaking, as we just talked about, there's a lot of advantages to it.
So you throw, is that a thousand square feet or a thousand feet?
Square, it would be square feet. And then here, you know.
Is that what this area is, I'm sorry?
No, I just made up a number.
Yeah, and what, what does this area count, by the, in terms of square footage, do you have any idea?
I can probably scale it for you just roughly. It's twenty, say, say that here, it's twenty by twenty, it's twenty scale plan, so that's four hundred square feet. Plus a little bit over here in the sidewalk, say it's five hundred square feet.
So five hundred is doable.
If, if that is five hundred, yes, I would have to do a more precise calculation, but I mean, they're willing to trim here and there, they just don't want to.
No, I just, you got to take us, I'm going to remove the whole entire thing. I understand, I just, I'm thinking we just don't want huge sections of hardscape along the pedestrian.
In an area that's supposed to be landscaping, used for drainage and greenery.
Right. I mean, because we, that's the whole idea with Big Y and the way it's set, the buildings are set back, it's, the buildings in the front have space between the sidewalk for trees and stuff. I, I think it needs to be changed, I think, I like the idea of twenty percent and not to exceed five hundred square feet. Thoughts?
I just still see this as hard to enforce the way it's written. It's a, it's a bit ambiguous. I know we're talking about in its discretion applying to the materials to be used. But the way I read it right now, the commission may allow in its discretion, makes it sound like we could thumbs up or thumbs down whether, whether an applicant can even use hardscape. So I think we might see that come up, the way it's currently written. It also isn't clear whether the hardscape materials have to be a contiguous area, or if you can apply this percentage in patches throughout the front landscaped area, so I think that's something that would need to be addressed too. I just think from an application standpoint, going forward with the way it's written, it would be really hard for us to interpret when applications come before us.
So the, the discretion is just for the material, whether the zoning commission thinks pavers are better in this situation, or concrete, basically, bluestone, whatever it might be. That's the only discretion, it's not a discretion of whether you could have hardscape or not, it's just, it's in the materials section, so it's a discretion of the type of material. So the zoning commission gets to choose if, if we propose paper, if we propose concrete, but the zoning commission thinks pavers are better for drainage, then they can, they can allow that. If we don't include, like, concrete, other hardscape materials, then we, we don't get the benefit of making these other sites conforming. And we wouldn't be proposing to go with as written, we would be adding these other things that we talked about. Twenty, maximum twenty percent, or five hundred square feet, whichever is less. And that would be an aggregate total, Megan, so like here, we have a foot strip along the sidewalk, we have a little piece there, just as an example. So it would be five hundred square feet aggregate, or twenty percent of the front landscaped area, whichever is less. We would add the required direct connection to a counterpublic sidewalk. And we would add the easement requirement, so that's permanently accessible to the public. Which the businesses are going to want anyways, but we'll put that just so it's more permanent.
Well, you're assuming this business wants it, but maybe not the future, right? So, it becomes permanent on the land.
It would become permanent on the landmark, right?
I haven't researched all of these properties since probably four years ago. But the, the one thing is, do you fully understand what the front landscape buffer is? So, the front landscape buffer in, is the area on the property. So you have, say this is the property, and the street is here, okay?
So you have the street, and then what's the buffer between the street and the property, is it ten feet, is it just right up to the street?
It could be, it differs where it is, so you've got. I'm going to give you a drawing, hoping you can see this.
What is it for Route One?
I'm going to, I'm going to get, it depends, so just give me a second to give you a little diagram. So, the front landscaped area, can you see this at home a little bit? Yes, this is the property line. There's a right-of-way between the property line and the. There's a right-of-way between the property line and the physical street. So just, there could be forty feet in that right-of-way or ten feet of that right-of-way of grass. And typically, your sidewalks go within that right-of-way, not on the property. So, the more we're pointing at this, the example, and there are a few that went through when we had a sidewalk grant, there are a number of sidewalks with these kind of resting places for pedestrians in the right-of-way. That's not the front landscaping area we're discussing, the front landscaping area is the twenty-five feet from the edge of the right-of-way. Which is landscape.
So the building into the parking lot, it doesn't matter?
It's the first twenty-five feet from the property line. So I'm So, but I'm just trying to, just, so do you, do you understand kind of the difference? It's not from the edge of the pavement, you could have, there's areas in Mariner's Way where the right-of-way, depending on what side of the road, could be twenty-five feet of right-of-way. Then you have the property and you could have that additional twenty-five feet, I'm picking the twenty-five feet, these all depend where you are. So a right-of-way is not always ten feet here um, or, or five feet here, it could vary substantially. So you're not talking about the area between the road and the property line, you're talking the area between the property line and the property. So it doesn't mean that there's no opportunity for a sidewalk or a resting space. Just so that you're in the right of. It's not in the front landscaping.
With the exception that most pedestrian notes, Route One, which is DOT, and DOT, they generally don't want people sitting on the right-of-way because of liability issues, so this one's not on the state highway. On this example, we have the edge of the road, we have fifteen to twenty feet before the property line, and then we have another twenty-five feet of front landscape area. This is more typical, so you're getting twenty-five from the property line to the building or to the parking area. Um, but usually get at least a five, ten, fifteen, twenty feet of right-of-way. So it's not twenty-five exactly from the street, no one sees the property line, it's invisible. From the street, you're seeing forty instead of twenty-five um, of green, green, and, you know, usually the right-of-ways are grass, lampposts and
But in some circumstances, and when we did these sidewalks on Route One, there's a little space with a bench, resting area in the right-of-way with a bench. There's one also, it's kind of by the cordial shop, there's a few of them along Route One that were part of that sidewalk project that did get approved by DOT.
Okay.
Megan?
Yeah, Megan?
Sorry. I was just gonna ask, so does that mean if we put a requirement in that this had to connect to the sidewalk, that might not even be possible if the sidewalk i- if there's that buffer between the sidewalk and the property line in the right-of-way? Or would the applicant be connecting through the right-of-way? I'm not even sure how that would play out.
It would, I think it would depend on each specific site.
Or they're usually required to build the sidewalk in the right-of-way, so making a connection to their site is not a problem.
Well.
But it depends on where the sidewalk goes, and they have to put a piece of sidewalk to the property to put the patio, because DOT may not want the patio, as you said. Or the, the
Or it's like, it can't be on the right-of-way. And you could have a big enough space between in the right-of-way on the inside portion of the sidewalk before you're to the property line.
You can't privately develop a right-of-way without town or state approval.
I know that, I understand, but what we're saying is you're not gonna be able to always connect this plaza to the sidewalk.
I don't see a case where you wouldn't.
You'd be able to connect it with a small sidewalk if someone objected, I, I think.
So, using this as an example, you always have your town-required sidewalk pedestrian note
Yeah.
going across your whole entire frontage, so twenty-five foot strip, no matter where this, it's, it's not only patio, it could be anything, it could be a bench with a concrete pad. Wherever that is in here, uh, you know, unless there's a, a ledge drop-off, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't connect within twenty-five feet, why you couldn't physically connect, we're all flat, we're all sand and gravel along Route One. I don't see any physical reason why you wouldn't be able to connect. And we've done most of the site plans up and down Route One, we've done a lot of special exception plans where sidewalks are required and always connecting. My building out at Forty Elm Street, we brought the sidewalk right from the building and right out to the sidewalk. And it just allows pedestrians to come right into the property. There's no easement, there's nothing, just want the connection to the sidewalk, business perspective. Um, that's just another example, that's, you know, that's that's how most businesses would look at it, and I don't, you know, there, there's always more than twenty-five feet, because very, very few circumstances, the property line's at the edge of the road, there's always something, some buffer in there, five, ten, fifteen, in some areas it's fifty. Um, we're doing Spencer Plains Road up there, and there's like a fifty-foot DOT right-of-way, and then we have to be twenty-five behind that, so we're getting seventy-five over front landscape buffer in, in that particular circumstance.
There's a little bit more.
Could, could this possibly, are we saying that perhaps this could be rewritten to perhaps capture some of the concerns that the commission has right now to, um?
So, so you could make, so tonight you're making a recommendation to the planning commission.
Zoning.
Oh, sorry, the zoning commission, um, from the planning commission saying that the proposal is consistent or inconsistent with relevant sections of the plan of development, you could say you, it's inconsistent or consistent, but you have the following concerns. The text, um, you have concerns about the text for discretion, I've been kind of writing, I think, what you're thinking. Sorry, I'm making too many pictures over here.
Can we defer this as well? Is this something where we could take a few more minutes to think about, or?
I mean, you can.
I'm just curious, I just, oh, we don't have another meeting.
No, no, you're saying, we have to say yea or nay, I mean, with, we can cite
So, so you could, well, we have two questions, three questions. All right, so for the public hearing, um, is scheduled for the next zoning meeting, you do not have a meeting in between, and then the applicant can request to continue that. Um, you could have a special meeting to think about it more in between. Um, you could make a decision on some of the, and add the comments that you've discussed tonight. Uh, some of those were, you had concerns that the language is subjective um, and that there was too much discretion with the, um, hardscape. Um, you would require if this proposal was to be purp- proposed, I mean, approved, it didn't direct con- Why am I, I'm just hilarious here, would have a direct connection to a public sidewalk. Um, you, I think you talked about these would only be required if there was an easement for the public to use this area, I don't know where you left that at. Um, you would reduce the maximum size or percentage of the front area for this use to, not to exceed twenty percent of the front landscaped area or five hundred square feet. Which other things? And that the zoning commission or this commission would make a determination if the area for um the, I keep calling it a patio, it could be multiple patios, or it could be continuous areas of hardscape throughout the front landscaping area. So you could recommend approval with the, if the following concerns are addressed by the zoning commission, you could also recommend denial for these concerns. You can continue, have a special meeting to think about it more before the zoning meeting. Or the applicant can go to the next zoning meeting, and then they would get continued to the February. Right now, we're scheduled for February third for zoning, that would actually continue them the nineteenth, that agenda, we have a special meeting, so that would continue them probably to the March. The nineteenth is our joint meeting with the closed agenda, so we really can't have a
From a procedural standpoint, so if, if we approve it even with conditions, that doesn't mean that zoning has to necessarily take those under consideration, right?
Well, you're, you're, you're setting a recommendation you know, that the applicant, the proposal's consistent with the appropriate sections of the regulations, however, you could word it that the, the following concerns were rated and raised and need to be addressed prior to adoption of the text, and the applicant could try to address those prior to the zoning meeting on February third.
But we'd be saying, like, it's consistent if these changes were made, or we're basically saying it's consistent, but we also would like these changes to be made versus
You could say
Right now, like, as written, I would, as written, it's inconsistent, but if you made these changes, we might
That's how you report, it's your report, so you could say we find, you know, the applicant, the proposal generally consensus, uh, consistent with the plan of conservation and development in the following sections. However, the following would need to be addressed for this text to be consistent.
Does the architectural ward get a crack at looking at the landscaping, um, for the front?
So this is a text amendment, so they, they really look property by property, not
But, but if we made, in other words, any property that wants, that comes before zoning say with a site plan, does it go?
They would look at it at that point, but they're not gonna review the text amendment.
No, no, but they would use, in other words, in looking at the hardscapes or, and the spatial relationships, et cetera, and do they assess?
They can comment on it, but if it meets the regulations, it's kind of hard to deny something that meets the regulations, but they could make suggestions. And we would prefer to have one larger patio versus four hardscape areas, things like that.
And so this is for the pedestrian note, right? Only properties within pedestrian notes, so any redevelopment or development within the pedestrian note requires a special exception. And that special exception process requires the applicant to go through ARV first, get their recommendations. In some cases, the planning commission for referral, and then to the zoning commission for public hearing. So the public gets a crack at it, ARV gets a crack at it, possibly in some cases, the planning commission gets a crack at it, so I guess it goes through that whole process.
Thank you.
So as, uh, as I look at the plan of conservation and development and, and steer clear of the engineering details for, for this moment, I, I do think there is a, um, a consistency in design goals in general between the conserva- the plan of conservation development, um, economic development, policy one A.
Can you just give the page, so Karen puts all of this into the report, so that's So that's
Economic Development Section, uh, begins on page sixty-three.
Move to, um, policy one I.
Okay.
That's specific to the Route One connect, Route One border. And complete street improvements for walkability and aesthetics of Route One.
Yeah. To I'm slipping for Oh.
Page seventy, to promote economic benefits of the streets and speed pedestrians by I think it's consistent with policy one I
Right.
of the economic development section.
Yeah, and even in, in other sections, there's similar words about walkability.
Yeah, I'm just, this is broken down, the ECD part of, the EDC part of um, the plan is broken out by area.
By area, right.
And I'm looking at Route One border.
So, I mean, you could, you could say in general the proposed text amendment is consistent with the walkability of goal, walkability goals outlined in the plan of development, you know, specifically including sixty-three, page sixty-three, section one A, which are excited. You have to go through the whole thing, but you can kind of make some references to it, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, actually, policy one for Middlesex Turnpike, Route One fifty-four promote streetscape and aesthetic improvements to Middlesex Turnpike as a gateway to, to make a good impression on anyone driving through by investing in street trees, landscaping, consolidating curb cuts and developing merchandise display guidelines.
Can you just reference the page?
Wait, hold on.
Page sixty-nine.
One, one second though.
One A.
That's referring to the Middlesex Turnpike, we're worrying about
Well, one fifty-four, Route One, I, it, it, it's true, I've extrapolated, but I'm mentioning it because it captures
It captures what you wanna see, but it's the wrong area of town, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, the pedestrian note is like, it's, what's it, it's the town center, it's the Route One, it's Spencer Plains, it kind of encompasses all three of those areas. Which I think all of those have a section that talks about aesthetic improvements, so, yeah.
But, and Paul, it is, one fifty-four is, it is Route One, but we're talking specifically the Route One border.
It's actually not Route One.
Yeah, it overl- it overlaps, no, it overlaps.
So the pedestrian note that we're looking at
Is Route One border.
Is primarily Route One and every fifteen hundred linear feet pretty much of almost every intersection on Route One. So Schoolhouse, Spencer, North Main Street, so when you get into that fifteen hundred linear feet, that's how you capture properties on North Main Street, or Ultra Cosmetics on Spencer Plain, or West Marine.
So it's not the entire Route One border, it's fifteen hundred feet from those major intersections.
Right.
Um, so it's not the entire stretch, the entire corner.
Right, but it's generally consistent with the VOCD, um, policy one I, policy two, policy three on page three. Uh, seven, excuse me, page seventy.
And it was page?
Page seventy, and the three policies.
One, I, two, and three, all of it?
Yeah, it's consistent with that. Um, and then we have the concerns of the amount of space. We recommend twenty percent, not fifteen, and five hundred, and no more than five hundred square feet.
Do you want me to read through this again? Okay, that's, that's what I keep notes while you're talking, because, okay, so, uh, there was concerns um, that need to be addressed prior to the zoning commission considering adopting tech, this text. These concerns include the language being subjective with a lot of discretion relating to the types of hardscape, Megan, did that kind of?
Yeah, difficult to enforce as written.
Difficult to interpret and forces, and enforces written.
Yeah.
Okay. The text should be modified to require direct connections to public sidewalks. The hardscape areas should be for public use and in easement allowing for public use should be a requirement of the regulation as proposed. The hardscape materials within the front landscaped area should be reduced not to exceed twenty percent of the front landscaped area or a maximum of five hundred square feet total within the landscaped area. The hardscape located within the front landscaped area or I should say, the zoning commission should determine if the hardscape within the front landscaped area should be contiguous, or if multiple areas of hardscaped area should be allowed in the front landscaped area. That total twenty percent or a maximum of five hundred square feet. That's all I put down, unless you have more that I missed.
What with the E, the E3, could you address the E3?
Yes, so pretty much it said that they require that the hardscape area be for public access and the late, the regulation should be amended to have an easement required for these areas to secure and guarantee public use.
Would you consider just a decorative thing for public use? Does that fulfill your definition for public use?
Well, the, the commission, we were just talking about, you could have a patio or a hardscaped area, uh, so within the front landscaped area is private property. So someone could say, I'm just fencing it this off and no one can use it. So what I think the commission was saying earlier, they didn't want them for private use, they wanted them for public use if this was located in the pedestrian node and they were used as either gathering areas or resting spots. So in order to secure that area being public use, there would need to be an easement to secure that.
And when you say decorative, Paula, what do you, what do you?
Well, I guess I'm thinking of if you have, um, you know, sort of a little pathway, uh, you know, across the grass that leads nowhere, or some decorative stones, or a little mini wall type thing in the flowerbed. I, again, I'm, I, I guess I've been thinking more of
Yeah, that's
So do you think
Design elements, it's another like I said, it's just like with the flowerbed, but you're bringing it, it's
But I think that's part of, that's part of sixty-three already.
Right, correct.
It's already there, right. What you're talking about is already there, yes.
Oh, okay. So, so maybe, and this is the second time it's come up in the discussion, maybe the regulation should be clarified to just, to identify the hardscape, the territory should be somewhere you would walk on, you know, in this section and not little
Decorative.
A little section of hardscape where you put a planter on.
I think if it's in the pedestrian note, it should be walkable.
Walking or sitting or something that could be used by a pedestrian.
Talk to a bench or, yeah.
Yeah, I had one in my notes.
Yeah.
Could we add a preference for pervious or permeable surfaces?
Of course, maybe that's our preference as well, um, but we just wanted to make those other existing properties conforming too, so that's why we're more comprehensive. But yes, for all new projects, per, you know, pervious surfaces, sometimes pervious pavers are available for specific applications.
Right.
And ones that were already done may not be, the paver may not be pervious itself, but the overall patio that's dry-laid is considered generally pervious.
Correct.
It's not impervious.
Okay.
Are we adding that also?
I'm a, I'm a little
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's already there.
No, I guess I'm, I'm confused because you're saying for all new installation.
Of these.
Or Joe, Joe just said for all
I'm, I'm just thinking about the concrete ones that
That's why I don't want to put that in, because it wouldn't
And Megan
Make those conforming.
Right. That, that's right, so, all new construction.
How, however, the thing that I think you need to be careful of is new construction would be something with a permit, not something with a court order. So I think by saying all new construction, are you permitting, because it's
I think it adds too much complexity.
Well, I guess I'm just saying, depending on how you word it, I know what your intent is, I don't want you to shoot yourself in the foot. You know, I mean, and say, oh, because it's already there, it still would need to be permitted as part of a special exception. So I'm just
Right.
Trying to question you, how you word it, because it may not work
That's why I'm not in favor of the wording, because it's going to take care of stuff that's already been done.
Right, that's why we put discretion there, so the zoning commission gets to it. It's a special exception, so they have discretion across the board, so they have discretion with this on the type of material being used for that new project.
Right. Very good.
If I could clarify, um, what I was meaning was, to the extent possible, projects should be required to use permeable or pervious surfaces, or something to that effect. Um, not specific to a type of project, new or old, just a preference. If we're leaving discretion to evaluate in the text of the regs, just a general preference should be given to, or additional consideration should be given to projects using pervious or, uh, or permeable papers, or something to, something like that.
I mean, you could, it wouldn't discourage hardscape.
It's like, yeah. Yeah.
But I, I think, you know, when this is reviewed, you know, this goes to deep
Yeah.
They're going to ask for impervious.
Pervious.
I'm sorry, pervious, and you're proposing impervious. Sorry, I've been up since like four o'clock this morning. I'm sure you got two, but
For the people who are not us looking at this ten years from now, just to know what the intent was.
And remember, all these projects go through ARB and so forth, and like Paula said earlier, that they're going to have discretion if they, if someone comes in with a concrete patio, they're like, can you, please use pavers.
Right.
Um, because of that, you know, it's a preference. I mean, generally, people do that nowadays, it's more attractive, it's even as expensive as board concrete, so there's just kind of like a wash. Um, I, I see more and more people using pavers and this type of application rather than board concrete.
But I think what Megan was talking about was permeability, not pavers. I just said, we don't need to get into this.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna into that.
Can you read that back?
Nope. Not right now. Maybe tomorrow or the next day.
Do you have those sections? Do you want me to?
Oh, I have, yeah, I have that part, I just couldn't repeat it all.
So someone is making
Yeah.
A motion.
Make a motion that we approve.
The proposed text amended for CF-15 North Main Street relating to a hardscape change. Because it is consistent with sections, page three, the sections that Nick
Page seventy. Uh, the three sections.
Always one, two, and three.
Yeah. Consistent with the plan of conservation, VOCD.
And I think someone mentioned the economic development, section sixty
That is the economic development.
Six, section sixty-three, this was, and section
We wanted to get to the right section, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's like, it's just a start.
So, not sixty-three?
Just seventy, seventy.
Seventy.
Oh, that makes sense.
If this, if the text is amended to address the following concerns. So I'm not gonna, need to read it again, Paul talked about
I don't need to read it again, right.
The subjective language about discretion. Um, the hardscape needs to correct, connect directly to a public sidewalk. The hardscape shall not exceed twenty percent of the front landscaped area or five hundred square feet. The area of hardscape will be for public use and an easement will be required to allow for the hardscaped area. The zoning commission should consider if this area should be contiguous or allow for multiple areas totaling twenty percent of the front landscaping area and not exceeding five hundred square feet. I think that's it.
That's it.
Give me a second.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I said, sorry, there was a mouthful.
One additional question. An easement required on the hardscape area. Does the client need a survey to have an easement? I mean, how is that going to be documented?
So it would be part of a special exception permit. And the area of the patio would have that area, and an attorney would draft a legal agreement saying this easement is for the use of the public. Therefore, anyone can walk on this area of hardscape, not, and it will be closed to the public.
Thank, thank you for the explanation.
Good. Any, any other discussion, any other questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
I think you're all, appreciate your time.
And one last thing, just to add to staff reports, since you jumped around. We were talking about, um, our housing task force education, I forgot to bring this up. And it kind of came up a little bit tonight. Would it be helpful to do a general overview? It may take more than one meeting of zoning. What is the residence A district? What is the lot size? Or single family allowed or two families? What is the setback? What's the difference between any, I mean, if giving you charts, if giving you different things, would it make sense to just kind of have a discussion and an overview? It, it's up to you. I mean, it's up to what
So you put it all together.
So I, I put things together and a chart, but then I was thinking about it, and I'm like, okay, when was and I mean, maybe it was yesterday, when was the time, was the last time this board looked at a map? You know, and
And, and all, I, I would welcome it, and also to include the different overlay district, the plan, this development that
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, this should take more than one meeting, and I could probably um, I, I also did make a mistake, your next meeting of Wednesday, February 5th is at seven o'clock. This is the one, I have one speaker, but that was, and potentially some others, but the thought would, would a little zoning map, zoning regulation 101 be worthwhile? Yeah, it, it, it's up to you and your, you know, your, your comfort levels.
I'd be open to it, I'd be open to it, yeah. So
And I know Bob's going to pipe that. Bob will be our
Bob's going to be the presenter?
February 5th is seven, not six.
Is it seven, Wednesday, the nineteenth is six. So when we did our annual calendar and I knew we had speakers coming up and the planning and zoning commission meetings ended up both being on the same night, the thought was, rather than have a speaker who commissioned, 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 have us join. So Wednesday and the nineteenth is the six o'clock.
I'm just keeping it, I'm updating my calendar, so I
I'm sorry, February nineteenth is six o'clock?
Six o'clock, and that's on your calendar for the year. And I think that's the end of the six o'clock.
All right.
All right, so then maybe I'll go through and do that. Would it be helpful to, I guess I would need to do the business districts too, so that you understand where residential is allowed, business districts where it's not allowed, and then as Paul was getting into, you kind of zoning is like a cake. You have the base layer, you have of zoning, but then all these other things kind of fall. You have coastal management, and you have an overlay zone and a planned development district, and there's a lot of different
Different types of developments.
So maybe if I just kind of do a basic, kind of a 101, see how we get with that, and then talk a little bit about overlays and things like that. I did talk to Maria Di Marco, she is going to come in, and this, oh, another thing that I'm working on, she's going to come in and meet with me, and we're going to talk about, um, kind of how rentals, affordable housing rentals work. A little more guts into it. Owen, Matt, Willis and I are also working, someone had asked for a housing um, kind of a, a little bit of a comparison about what the difference between 830G and an incentive housing zone is. It's pretty complicated, so it's, kind of, it's what do you say, affordable housing, the cliff notes, but we can't include everything in there, it just gets too complicated, but at least it'll help to give you a general overview. Don't get frustrated, this is a lot of information to take in. So, I, I mean, it, it really is
It all, it all starts that up, and I, I actually have a zoning question.
Sure.
It's appropriate now. Um, accessory dwelling units are allowed, but they're not required anywhere. So would, in terms of increasing the housing stock in town, is that something that could be considered to, um, having a requirement for ADUs in new construction?
So, I, I guess you could make a regulation to require and I would say that's if we had nice flat land with no development. But when they tell everybody in this room, okay, if you want to rebuild your house, you have to build an accessory dwelling unit, and you have to have a pool, it's not going to go over well.
I know.
So I, I think it's something you have to encourage more than
Without requiring
Required.
Yeah, because I might not want a renter on my property, right?
Right, I know.
Yeah, it's tough. You, you try to promote something, but you look at it from the property owner's
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and I can, I can certainly see both sides. So just kind of thinking about, you know, some, some new large houses that, you know, maybe they're, um, in a place where there was a couple other small houses.
Okay, so
So you're kind of going from an affordability perspective, you're going backwards in that particular case.
So if I said, okay, I'm, I have a house, a property, and I'm going to build a five thousand square foot house, and sure, I'll build your ADU, but I'm not going to rent. So, I mean, you know, you kind of have to think how
We're going to cut out a door and just use it as a bedroom.
Maybe you're going to think about some like incentives, maybe, like, all right, you can get
change.
Maybe your setbacks could be relaxed a little better. If you have an ADU, maybe something else, you know.
You know, I'm thinking of building a two-car garage, and I was going to put an office above it. Well, I'm going to make that an ADU, just so when I go to sell the property, it's a legal
It's an option.
Whether they want to use it for a kid that's come home from college or an in-law.
I think if both people learned about it, knew it, and their property could support it, they'd probably want to do it. Like you're saying, it increases your value and creates more usable space, so.
Right.
But it, it depends on the, so property, so if you're just getting the plans back, um, I noticed that no one had their plan tonight, except for, oh, I didn't see any, this, oh, you did. Or we didn't have a few, so the reason that I passed them out is I didn't see any out there.
Right, right. Well, Doug does that, so
Yeah.
Thank you.
I figured Doug wasn't going to be here, so I put my, well, the one thing I didn't have
So, yeah, there are a few more out there, I just didn't see them, and I said, oh, no. How are we going to write, how are you going to write a motion, and I don't see any plans, so
I just said you knew Doug wasn't going to be here.
Mine's on my screen.
So just the one thing to help you prepare for these referrals and text amendments. Look at the landscaping section. Look at what a front landscaped area is. Read the purpose of landscaping. Read the definitions, because you were talking, and at one point, I'm like, I don't think everybody fully understands exactly what we're talking about um, on that, so just
And it's hard because it started off being focused on one property. And it's hard for me to remember that we have to think about it holistically, not just on this one property.
And it's whether this happens, and it's very common because you're going to get another text amendment coming in, I'm very sure, and the person is going to come in and talk about all about one property. Whether it's built or it's not built, in certain circumstances, something may be perfect and appropriate and awesome for that one property.
But no works.
Nowhere else, it may not apply anywhere else. It may be something that you may dislike somewhere else. So it's looking at, you know, in this case, landscaping is a requirement in every commercial district in town. Granted, they narrowed it down to the pedestrian node. But, I mean, what if they required it in an industrial zone, by the, in, in an industrial area, maybe you wouldn't want people to have a patio and sit out there, or maybe it could be dangerous, or, so you really kind of have to think of you have to look at it overall, and it's very easy to get sucked in, and I didn't want to cut you have to look at it overall, and it's very easy to get sucked in, and I didn't want to cut them off with.
Do we want to be including this in the actual recorded meeting?
No, this is, this is, this is the meeting.
I just wanted to make sure we're not adjourning first.
No, we jumped out of the staff report, but the thing is, it's a text amendment applies across the board, so you have a text amendment, and they say, well, it's just for this zone, and this is the property, and you look at it, and it's that, this is great, and then you look at it somewhere else. So that's, that's the whole thing, and you look at zoning districts, and if you look at the zoning map, there's areas that are, that probably should be rezoned, because you're going to go, why is that district over there? It made sense in nineteen seventy, it doesn't make sense now, and it may make sense in one area and not another, so just kind of keep that in mind, and look at with the text amendments, go back and look at the definitions, what's the definition of a pedestrian now? It's Route One, yeah, it's, has a whole list of intersections, it's within fifteen hundred linear feet of the intersection. And, and, and go through it, and kind of another section is just keyword search, go on the computer, put pedestrian now. You know, what's the definition of a street, what's the definition of front landscaped area? I know it seems kind of weird, like, why would I Google or start keyword searching the definition of the street? But a street is defined as something that it may not necessarily be a town road, and there's a certain width and a requirement. Zoning is like this giant spider web. And in the zoning regulations, there's all these italicized terms, and you, you look at one thing, and you go, oh, front landscape, but then you go, well, what's landscape, and then you find another detector, and then you find another, so you're kind of, all of a sudden, you kind of get trapped, that this means that, and this means this, and, and just think about that with these text amendments, and, and the map changes, and the overall reviews. So, and the planned development, um, the referencing, I mean, that's something I know Doug is.
That's very good.
Doug's very good at it, but just try to think about it, it just makes it a little bit easier at the meeting, in, to prepare. And we're, we're a little bit out of practice, this is the first time you've had a coastal site plan. I think I gave most of you the coastal site plan text, um, I can send it to you again, um, I remember some folks had it kind of like taped in the inside of their wallet in case of an emergency for when you need it. But it's, so I'll, I'll, I'll put that on my list to, to get it to you, and revisit those videos, things online. But if you don't do it every day, we're going to have a subdivision. Like a, not a subdivision, we're just adding a lot or shifting a line, it's new lots. You know, and this is, I'm rusty, we're all rusty.
It's an opportunity for open space.
Mm-hmm.
I remember that.
Yes. Alright, Megan?
Um, I was just going to say, after we're done learning the zoning regulations, I think it would be really interesting to look at areas in our P O C D and understand when we're talking about, for example, the pedestrian node, or we're talking about Schoolhouse Road, or the Main Street Corridor, or things like that, which zoning regulations overlap on those areas. Um, just to kind of get a sense for what policies we are recommending in our plan relate to which zoning regulations we have in those areas. There could maybe be a multi-step process, but I think it's important for us to understand how those two documents, the zoning regs and the P O C D, actually work together.
And maybe what I can do is word the agenda and do it in a few segments, and, and kind of go through and say, okay, zoning one oh one, the following districts, and then maybe before the meeting, you kind of can look at the plan and try to figure out where, you know, what that correlation is, or where it applies, or what it is, or, oh, I didn't realize that wasn't our downtown, I thought the pedestrian node extended, it's a lot, so, anyway, sorry to drag reading out some more.
Motion to adjourn?
Second rule.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I know Chris is opposed, to adjourn.
I am going to slam a sleepover.
Go for it, hold twenty-four straight.
Thank you.